Huntington Woods.
Thank you Sheldon.
Hi, here in Huntington Woods.
Thank you David.
Present in Huntington Woods.
Thank you Jeff.
Present in Huntington Woods.
Thank you Ben.
Well, you need Jill Plamper.
Oh, sorry, Ben's on the other board.
Wrong board.
Jill.
Hi Jill Plamper, I'm in Holland, Michigan.
Okay, thank you. And Mike Wright, I am also in Huntington Woods.
Okay, and for the record, I'm Hank Barry and I am also in Huntington Woods.
Okay, Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Okay, I think first thing we're doing is approving the agenda, so looking for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Hi.
Roll call, roll call please.
Sorry Hank, what do you need?
Roll call vote please.
How do you want to do that?
Just the same way you did attendance.
Jill Inger, aye.
Blake?
Blake Moore, aye.
Rick?
Rick Pullen, aye.
Sheldon?
Sheldon Coni.
David?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Mike Wright, aye.
Jeff Janks, you need?
Sorry Jeff?
Aye.
The screens keep bouncing around on me here, I apologize guys.
Yeah, thank.
Does that work better for you Hank, as far as?
Yeah, I just want to have somebody that's doing that, eventually we're going to have somebody for the minutes, they'll be able to put the roll call with that, so I mean, that's helpful, I appreciate it.
Perfect, we'll do that throughout the meeting then.
Thank you.
And as I was told, we are going to defer the approval of the August minutes to the next meeting, is that right?
Yes, you're going to defer all minutes until the following meeting, we really hope to have somebody and this has been, we do have the videos of it, but I don't have somebody to transcribe it yet, but we're working on that very hard and we hope to have somebody to have like both sets of minutes for you for the next meeting.
Do we need a motion to defer those, or can we?
You do please, I need a motion to defer and I need a second, just like the conventional vote.
Okay, motion to defer the August 24th meeting minutes to
September.
Oh, and September, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
August and September meeting minutes to hopefully the November meeting, motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you, go around the room, thank you, who is the first? Who's the first motion?
There wasn't one.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jill, first, do we have a second?
I, so moved as you stated, can I just do that? I move to defer the approval of the meeting minutes from last month to November.
And, and
And this month.
Until November, thank you.
August, September to November.
I second the motion.
Okay, Blake?
Blake Moore in favor.
Rick?
Rick Pullen, aye.
Sheldon?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Mike Wright, aye. Good Hank?
We're good on that.
Okay.
Your two, your first order of business, Mr. Chair.
Can we make it to mask up for the next meeting and just do this in person?
Eventually we'll get back there.
All right, first, first order of business is the site plan approval for an addition to the Murphy residence at 10034 Ludlow. Looks like we have Chris here, Chris, did you want to present, or you want Hank to start?
I can start.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, so Hank, can we pull up the site plan?
Yeah, hold on, I'm going to do this right here. Nope. Okay, hold on.
Nice screensaver.
Yeah.
No, that's a site plan.
That's not funny. All right, hold on, this is.
Hank, can I ask a question, I got two hard copies of a, of a sketch. Difference seems to be that one was shaded in, one was not, as far as the additions. And the shaded one was the update, I'm just curious if there are any other changes.
No.
Thank you.
I think the, the one that was shaded, I believe might have had some grading additions to it, some grade shots, I believe was the difference.
Okay, so you want that, Chris?
Site, there we go, there we go, yeah, perfect, thank you. Okay, so just some site information, lot zoned R1D, it is a double lot. It's 12,500 square feet. With the additions we're proposing, we're looking at having 27% lot coverage. We did in August receive a variance for 815 square feet for the house size and 215 square feet for the garage size. We also feel like we comply with character bonuses for the 20% fenestration, 26 foot maximum rough height and architectural details, which gives us 550 square feet of additional square footage. And we qualify for the maximum lot bonus, which is 350 square feet, which gives us an allowable house of 3,615 square feet, which is what we're proposing. The site plan shows on the east side or the right side of the property, we are extending the garage and the workshop area to the minimum side yard setback of five feet, so we're adding about just a little over three foot on that side. We're covering the front porch that's there now, so the front yard setback is maintaining. We're adding in addition to the rear of the house, which consists of a family room, and then we also have a deck. On the east side of the, I'm sorry, the west side of the property, our addition is 34 feet, little over 34 feet off the west property line or the left side. Hank, if we could go to the floor plan?
Floor plan?
Main level, yeah, there we go, thank you. Okay, so you can see here, what we're going to do is there's an existing garage and workshop along with a breezeway that was converted into a makeshift mudroom laundry room that was in bad disrepair. The garage was only 18 feet wide, so it's substandard for a two car garage. Our goal is to widen the garage out, so we get a solid 20 feet in there for a standard two car garage. Increase the workroom area, the workroom area primarily acts as not only a spot to store stuff, but the house, for the most part, is on a crawl space, there's an area under part of the kitchen dining study area that is on a basement, but the left wing and across the back is all on a crawl space. So they're, they don't have a lot of storage, so we're proposing that addition as well as increasing the laundry room, mudroom area and adding a powder room. My client does have some mobility issues, which is not expected to improve, but probably would deteriorate over time, so we are trying to give generous walkways and the powder room is, meets ADA. The house also lacks a family room, it has a formal living room, which we're turning into a study because the foyer was a very narrow hallway as you come in, it was only a three foot wide hallway. So we're widening that, making that into a study, maintaining the kitchen and the dining room, although we're actually making the kitchen smaller because we're creating that hallway to connect the two spaces, currently you have to go through the landing of the stairs, step up two steps to the landing and then step up another two steps to get into the rest of the house. So we added a hallway which decreased the kitchen slightly. And then we're adding the family room, which again, the house currently doesn't have a family room. And then where we added the family room was a current deck, so we removed that and placed a new deck there. Hank, if you could go to that picture that you have of the front, of existing of the front of the house? There we go. So you can see here, the house is actually very tall, it's about 28 and a half feet to the peak of the main roof. Part of that is because the house is quite a bit out of the ground to the main floor. You can see the existing garage, it's here, and that breezeway area that really doesn't add much in terms of architectural quality to the house. So what we're proposing to do, if you could go to the front elevation Hank? There we go, is again, not only replace the garage with a new garage and the mudroom area, but we're, we're bringing the covered porch across and you can see here, it creates a nice horizontal line going across the house and with the garage and the mudroom being the same heights now, as opposed that little breezeway area that was stepped down, it gives a little more balance to the front of the house without really changing the massing, and we feel though it also greatly visually anyway, reduces the overall height of the house because we have that roof line for the front porch and that roof line to the side and it just gives the house a little more, anchors it a little bit better and reduces visually the height of the house. So we feel like what we're asking for is a benefit, not only to our clients, but to the community, you know, Ludlow is a, is a very heavily traveled street, it's right on the golf course, so we think this will be a great improvement to the community and we feel like it's a nice project and we appreciate your entertaining the idea of approving this. And with that Hank, I guess I'll turn it over to you at this point.
Mr. Chair, are you okay with that?
Yep, absolutely, go ahead.
Okay, so going back to the site plan that Mr. Morgan was talking about, the minimum setback of five is fine on the one side. At the zoning board of appeals meeting, and I do want to emphasize the fact that the size variance has already been approved. So what you're looking at is for the architectural details and you know, look at massing scale, that type of thing. And if you have any questions on that, please feel free to ask Mr. Morgan or myself throughout the process. But if you take a look, most of this addition is in the rear portion of the house. So if you're taking a look at it, basically what you have is 100 foot of frontage. You still have a significant line to the back, he meets all his requirements for lot coverage, he's under for his lot coverage. His drainage and grading is fine, there's no anticipated problems based on what he submitted to this. And then the front line for the porch and the way that he's redoing the roof in the front, basically typically when you look at those things, that brings the mass down a level. So if you take a look at what was there, which is this versus what he's proposing here, you see the same house with entirely different treatments and it gives it a little bit of differentiation between the two and also brings it down, so the focal point now again becomes the front porch rather than all the detail that's going on on the side of it. Other than that, most all of this is in the back. Garage is typically garage doors are made standard at 16 and 18 feet, his garage was 18 feet wide, which means he had a 16 foot door, which would make it virtually impossible to park two vehicles in it. That was one of the reasons that the zoning board of appeals granted the additional space for the garage and the shape and everything for it. So now when you take a look and you go to the, these are all as built here. This is the rear portion of the house and this is the east elevation of the house. This is the, what, this is what's proposed for the rear portion of the house here. This is what you see from the left side or the west elevation and this is what you would see from the right side or the right elevation. So all sides have plenty of fenestration, the gable details are broken up with extra types, with a different type of siding other than the bricks, so that basically you have some, it's not monotonous, you have some detail involved in that. The floor plans, as Mr. Morgan explained to you, he's simply going to have a deck going off back out of the family room. Areas have been widened and stretched out so that it can be used. And then there's the second, there's a very minimum amount of work being done to the second floor. The anticipation, as I understand it was, is that the second floor was may not always be in use and it may go down to the first floor, which explains some of the other rooms and room sizes that could easily be converted to other uses on Mr. Morgan's first floor. Other than that, he meets the requirements for the height. He meets the front yard requirements, the side yard requirements. He meets the lock coverage and he did receive a variance that was approved from the zoning board of appeals. So he did get that, so his maximum house size, even though it exceeds what would normally be allowed, has been approved already. The neighboring lots on both sides are only 50 by 120, 50 by 125 lots, 6,250 square feet, his lot is over 12,000 square feet. Colonials on one side and a bungalow on the other. Siding, brick, his is brick and siding and his garage is attached. The house next to him on the east does not have a garage and the house on the other side is a detached garage. So again, Mr. Morgan satisfied the ZBA as to the need for exceeding the maximum house size and as such, the size was granted. What you, again, you're looking for is a review of the design to see if it meets all the other requirements. And again, the front facade change does include that porch with the intent of helping reduce the existing massing with that. So if you have any other questions, I am happy to answer them, as I'm sure Mr. Morgan is. I'm going to take this off the screen so I can see who's in here, so unless anybody wants to refer to it.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open it up for public participation. Jay Schwartz, if you could just state your name and address, take yourself off mute, state your name and address and go ahead.
Yeah, good evening everybody, my name is Jay Schwartz. I live at 10014 Ludlow, which is immediately to the east of the Murphys residence and have been a residence here continuously since 1965, 55 years. Needless to say, that means I've known the Murphys since the time they've moved into the house. I rise tonight in complete support of their application for this, the application that is before the board tonight. I join with Mr. Morgan in his statement that I believe that this proposed addition would not only be of value to the Murphys in their house, would add to the resale value of the house, but would also be of extreme good value to the entire housing stock of our city. If anyone was going to be negatively affected by this, it would be me because I could literally look out my west windows and see the garage, the garage and the associated structures, and that's not going to change. And moving the garage, rebuilding it, getting a new one and just bringing it closer to my house by a couple of feet, no big deal, not, it's not an issue. So in summary, as the closest neighbor who would have any potential negative effects here, I have none. And I rise in complete and absolute support of this application and I urge this board to approve it with the minimum of hesitation and delay. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it, anyone else from the public wish to speak? Okay, not seeing any, we'll close public participation and go around the room, Blake?
Thank you, you know, I think it looks great, I mean, I think Chris always does a really nice job with visual treatment, I think the the plan to reduce the mass is so much more elegant than the existing breezeway. I, I can't find anything to be critical of, I think it looks, I think it looks great.
Thanks Blake, Jill Inger?
I'm with Blake, I think it looks great, I think it's a huge improvement to the house and will benefit the whole neighborhood, good job.
Thanks Jill, Rick?
Hank, one question for you.
Yes sir.
Is the driveway compliant at the width that it's shown on the site plan?
It will be yes.
And what are we considering that driveway width?
Well, basically what it has to be is it has to be, the driveway's not changing, but it has to be that it can be a minimum of the width of the garage doors plus three feet. So that's what they have there, that I'm looking at on the site plan and it's a paver driveway that's going to come through and it's going to match, it's going to meet that, but the approach is not going to be touched, but the approach will be smaller. So in the reality of that is the approach will be a little bit out of scale, but the top part would be legal.
Okay, my concern is more so as you go up further and you get a large massing of driveway, I understand it is brick pavers. But as long as it's within the requirements, that's okay, other than that, looks good.
So, yeah, and we're not planning on changing the driveway, it's going to stay existing, we're going to protect it and leave it as is.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks Rick, Sheldon?
Hi, a couple of questions. Hang on, okay, off of mute, a couple of questions, one is Hank, just a general question, I notice on each of these applications, we're not getting the, the subject property and its two neighbors, we used to
You should, you should have that.
Get you that stuff.
That's actually on the hard copy. I'm looking at it, the, the thing is, is that when, and Chris and I talked about this, when he went to take the photos of the properties on either side, it was hard to get a scale situation because Ludlow goes up, there's a huge elevation as to the start of Ludlow's rise. So he can't put everything it would be, and pardon me for being rudimentary with this, would it be here, here and here? And that's exaggerated, but it should be, you should have that.
Well, I, I've got the sketches, so it's basically
Right.
Line of the houses.
Yes.
We used to get something that showed the, the front views of the houses, or at least a representation of the front views of the houses, it gave us some idea.
You shouldn't have had this, sorry for doing that.
Yeah.
I didn't get it.
Yeah, I didn't get it.
Didn't get that one? Okay, because they were all stapled together. But in any case, that was the reason why that it was difficult, because Mr. Morgan did talk about trying to produce something that you could have that would give you an idea of what the scale of the houses were next to each other, but for example, even though Mr. Schwartz's house is smaller than the Murphy's house, it doesn't look that much shorter than it because it's up the greatest so far up and
I'm not complaining, I'm not complaining about this particular plan.
He did submit it, but it may, for whatever reason, it may only be on my copy if nobody else got it.
Yeah, and it wasn't included with either one of the plans we got tonight, I'm just curious, is that a requirement of the?
It is, but again, we can waive the requirements for that, there's a possibility that says that we can waive this. I actually did think that you had this particular one where the three are in a row, but it, yeah, I mean, it just seems like in this case, it wouldn't make much of a difference at all because there's elevation changes.
All right, anyway, I endorse with everybody else the the plan, I think it's a terrific plan, I think it's a substantial improvement. And since the zoning board has already taken away from us any arguments about the, about the size of the house, I'm particularly happy that the, the person who was the next door neighbor who would be most impacted by the changes that were made supports the program and that gives me considerable comfort. I got a question about the driveway, because I've run into this situation elsewhere in the city. The driveway pavers seem to extend in front of the, oh, well, toward the porch. Toward, yeah, or that auxiliary door and it's just natural for people to be able to park at that particular point, even though technically it is not part of the driveway. There, there have been some other occasions in the city that I've seen where people basically have pavers up in front of their porch and they just treat that as part of the driveway, as another parking spot. Even though it probably shouldn't be, and I'm just curious how that's addressed here Hank.
Typically, they're not really doing anything different, but you only get what you're allowed for parking. So if they were to pull in front of that and use that as a parking space, it would technically be in violation and could be subject to a citation, a parking violation. It's not something that, to be honest with you, that we would go out looking for, but I mean, upon complaint base, we would address that. But I think basically with the style and the mass, in the way that the house is laid out, that would be counterproductive to them to use it as that, you know, you kind of, if you did that, you would be kind of redoing the front of the house and making it look like Mr. Morgan's designed and then go ahead and put a car in front of it, you can't see it. I think that, to answer your question, they can't park there, that's your, that's
Yeah, I understand, my question is about, as a practical matter, if somebody shows up and they need the space and they got to get off the street, that seems to be an obvious solution to that particular problem.
I would tell you that it's not a legal solution to the problem.
Okay, neither is speeding down telegraph, but people do it all the time.
That's true.
All right, I'm, I like the plan, I'm in favor of it and I have no, no issues at all.
All right, thanks Sheldon, David?
I like the plan as well, definitely an improvement over the houses presented now, so excited to see it when it's complete. Like Sheldon, my biggest concern would have been the size, but that's already been addressed, which is, makes it easier for us, so, nice job.
Thanks David, Jeff?
Yes, I support it, I like the material upgrade. I like the making of the house more accessible for the residents, so we don't lose someone. And I especially like the support that came from the neighbor on the east. One of my concerns and my only note was, aside from what the total height was, was east-west exposure as it relates to sunlight. And obviously by moving closer between the two buildings, that had an impact. But with Mr. Schwartz coming forward and saying that wasn't an issue, that resolved my only concern.
Great, thank you Jeff, Jill Plamper?
I appreciate the design, I think that you do a really good job of reducing the massing across the front of the house. I appreciate the, the components that you're using, that you're incorporating in, I think it looks really good. The mix of materials is good, you're breaking up, not, you're not, you're using brick, but not just brick, so it doesn't look like a fortress. It's a great job, I'm all for it. Thanks.
Great, thank you Jill. I voted this, on this at the ZBA, so I'm going to remove myself from comments and votes, so we are going to look for a motion.
I move to accept the plan as presented.
Second Jill, Jeff second, we're going to go around the room, Blake?
I'm in favor.
Jill, Inger?
Also in favor.
Rick?
In favor.
Sheldon?
Aye.
David?
I'm in favor.
Looks like it passes.
I give the vote also.
Do you need me to vote as well?
Yeah, you forgot.
Oh, I'm sorry, you know what, I'm, apologize guys, apologize.
There's a lot of names in the room.
There is, and the funny thing is the Brady Bunch keeps moving around on me, so.
Yeah.
Jeff? Jeff?
Support.
Thank you, Jill Plamper?
I vote in favor.
Okay, all those opposed? Okay, I think we're good Hank.
Okay, thank you very much. And Mr. Morgan's wifi crashed, so he's been in and out, but I'll be sure to let him know, and then I do believe that the Murphys are on, so they heard this.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Thank you guys, I'm back, so thank you.
All right, thanks Chris, appreciate it, thanks for the thought through this.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have met our site plan approval for a new house by Helen Holmes at 10758 Hart. Who's here to present that?
Patrick Redd, behalf of Helen Holmes.
Okay, Patrick, would you like to go ahead and get started, or would you like Hank to start? Okay, Patrick, would you like to go ahead and get started, or would you like Hank to start?
Well, I've been down this road a couple of times. I'll let Hank start.
Okay.
Let me get your plan out here. Yeah, I'm gonna do.
Patrick, just so we know, I don't see your name on the Zoom. Who you called in under?
Patrick, can you hear us?
Okay, there we go.
There we go. Okay, you're back. We see you now. Thank you.
Okay, so basically, I'll start off then. Basically, what we have here is a 40-foot vacant lot that Mr. Ray is going to build on. What he's given us is he's given us a brick structure, colonial in style, 26 feet in height, so it does meet the height requirements. He is, hold on one quick second here. He is 26 feet on the height. He is in the front yard, 27.83 feet, which is meets the requirements. His side yard meets the requirements, proposed is five, total of 15. What's required is five, total of 14. The rear yard is 53.33, required is 30, and he is at 29.88% lot coverage. And his maximum house size, which is permitted, is 2200, and he is at 2142. So basically, he's a 40-foot lot. One house next to him is also 40 feet. Another house on the other side, the west neighbor, is 50 feet. His lot area is 5,000 square feet, as is the neighbor to the east, and the lot area to neighbor to the west is 6,250. This is zoned, again, our one E. The house size that he proposes is 2,142 square feet. The east neighbor is 1,945 square feet, and the west neighbor on the bigger lot is 1,165 square feet. Again, this is a two-story colonial. If you take a look, because there is no photos to show you what's there now, it's not an addition, it's just a vacant lot. This is what Mr. Ray is proposing, and I don't know if you can see the cursor here. But let me see if I can do this for you. Okay. So that's where we're at with the house. The house uses mutton bars, brick roll locks. It does have shutters on the outside, soldier coursing on the top of the windows, and he also has a difference of brick coursing on the top where he changes direction and provides somewhat of a soldier course to the top of the gable peak. Gutters and downspouts will come out on the side. He shows a metal railing on the front. There are lights at the entry as required. This is the west elevation of the house, again, using roll locks, mutton bars all the way around, downspouts on the front and rear on the sides. He's using a continuous ridge vent, and that's gonna mean that there's gonna be soffit vents on the side of this. The chimney is located in the rearmost portion of the house. If you take a look at the rearmost portion of the house, because of the height, because of the narrow width of the house and the narrow width of the lot, the house appears tall and slimmer to the design. On the egress doors that they have, there's a light, which is required by code, soldier coursing above the doors and the windows, and brick roll locks at the bottom of the windows and doors on this particular elevation. On this elevation, which is the east side elevation, again, you can see the side view of the chimney, the entire house being made in brick. You can see the roll locks. You can see the soldier coursing on the top. And then again, a change of brick to reflect a perpendicular brick to the top of the gable on the side. And you can see where this has evolved from. Originally, when Mr. Ray came to me with this, there were some windows that were lacking on the side elevations. He did add those windows in order to gain the fenestration issue that he had to solve. But other than that, basically, I don't have anything else for this particular house. If you have any questions, I'm sure myself and Mr. Ray would be happy to answer.
Great, thanks, Hank. Patrick, anything to add?
No, I think Hank summed it up. I, you know, I, we've built several homes in Huntington Woods and kind of understand now the process and, you know, what we're all looking for architecturally, and that we did our very best to satisfy those requirements.
Okay, great. We'll go ahead and open it up to public participation. Anyone from the public wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, we will close participation from the public and go around the room.
Wait a minute. I'm sorry, Nick Gruber, Nick Gruber has his hand up.
Oh, go ahead, Nick. Go ahead and unmute yourself and state your name and your address, please.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Nick Gruber. I live at 10743 Hart Avenue. It's directly across the street from the proposed property. You didn't have any front pictures of the place, but I had a question to the city is that property floods significantly. It's the lowest elevation point between the adjoining properties, and it ponds even in a light rain. What's the city plan as far as the, making sure that that water gets taken care of? Because right now, both, at least three properties, that's the drainage point in the neighborhood.
Mr. Chair, very good and fair question, if I might answer.
Please, by all means.
Okay, what we do is we send out the plan and the site plan as provided by Mr. Ray to NOAC and FROSE for a review for drainage and grading. And then at the end of the project, Mr. Ray is also responsible for submitting as-built drawings. Those are again reviewed by NOAC and FROSE. So there's two purposes with this. One is to make sure that he builds it so that it doesn't drain onto neighboring properties. And the second is to make sure that he builds what he says he's going to build, where he says he's gonna build it. So that's the purpose of both of those. Now, the drawings have been submitted to NOAC and FROSE. They have not gotten them back to the city at this point, but nothing would be, permits would not be issued without a NOAC and FROSE's approval. So if you want to piggyback onto that, you can actually make the motion to approve, or if you make a motion to deny, it won't matter, but if you make a motion to approve, you can make it subject to the approval of the grading and drainage plan as submitted to NOAC and FROSE on behalf of the city.
Okay, great, thank you. Nick, does that answer your question?
It does. I just want to make sure that all that water that's currently collecting that spot does get taken care of. It sounds like there's a profit for that.
Okay, Michael, Lisa Man Blanco has her hand up.
Okay, I apologize, because I can't see the
Yeah, I'll kind of monitor it for you.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, if you could, Lisa, could you state your full name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Lisa Man Blanco. My address is 10815 Hart. Couple houses over and across the street from the proposed house, and I just wanted to ask some questions about the tree plan for the lot. It's a, it was a, you know, a spot that was natural with a lot of big trees, and recently, a tree in the front was taken down. Was just wondering about the rest of that.
You want to defer that to you?
Well, we don't take down any trees that we don't need to take down for construction, so if the tree is in the way of construction or the driveways, the sidewalks, those are the only trees we would take. So if you could go back to the site plan there, Hank, and you could see where the house overlays, I think we have the trees marked on there.
You have three that are marked for removal? Let me see if I can get this back up for you.
Those would be the only trees we would take.
Yeah, there's
Sick or dead, we would take that as well.
Does, does that include the trees that sound like they've already been removed?
I, there's
Any trees?
There's three total trees that will be removed in this project. One would be in the middle of the driveway. One is in the front, to the left-hand side of the property, and the other is right in the middle of where the garage would have to sit.
Was that tree that Lisa was referring to, was that taken down by the city, Hank? Do you know?
No, it would be on private property.
All right, anybody else out there, Hank, that's got a hand up that I can't see?
I don't see anybody, but let me just go through the list. We've got a lot of people in here, so I want to make sure. Lisa, did that satisfy your question?
So it does sound like quite a number of trees are coming down.
There's three, according to the plan.
Okay.
Hank, does that already include one of the trees that was in the plan? So would there be four trees going down or three?
I show three total on the site plan removal, so one of the trees that may have come down would already be, I'm gonna surmise is one of the, is the one that's already down. The one in the front yard, there's one in the side yard to the east, which would be where the driveway is gonna be, and there's one to the rear, which is the north, which would be like right smack in the middle of where the garage is gonna sit.
It was the easement tree that came down this week.
Okay, then that would be done by the city.
Okay, got it. Yeah, thanks. Okay, I think we're ready to go around the room. We will start with Jill Plamper, please.
So I've seen a number of Hillen Homes go up, and I want to thank you for adding some detail to the front of the house with the shutters and the metal railings and stuff like that, but I have to say that, and this may be an unpopular opinion, I don't know, but I'm not all that thrilled with it. I know you meet the size requirements, and I know you meet, you're doing it all in brick, which, you know, in this case, has, you've created yet another giant brick box. I thank you for the windows. I think that's lovely, but there is no feature on the side of the house, on the, on either side of the house, that differentiates it from any other Hillen home in the, in the city, and I, I was expecting or hoping for a little bit more creativity. And though I may not be able to vote against it because it meets the standards, I have to be perfectly honest, I don't care for it. You're creating box after box after box, and I don't find them to be a wonderful addition to our city. I really don't. And I'm sorry if I have a dissenting opinion on this, but I see a great big wall of brick with windows in it and nothing to differentiate or break up no character on the sides of the house. You're adding it to the front, thank you, but the sides and the rear are sadly lacking. So that is my commentary, and I'm sorry if it's unpopular.
Sorry, thanks, Jill. We will go to Jeff.
I support Jill's opinion. Huntington Woods is a home with a lot of different architectural character, and to just be plumping in, I'm happy it's brick without the siding crap, but I wish there would be character around the house. So when people looked at it, they would basically be able to say, it's a Hillen house, and it really is neat because it's unusual.
Thanks, Jeff. David.
Um, I'm not excited by it, but it meets the requirements, and I feel we all feel kind of, you know, handcuffed by it. You know, the rules are what the rules are, and it meets that, and, you know, unfortunately, people do keep buying them, which, you know, is a secondary issue, but, you know, it's fine. It meets the rules, and it is what it is.
Thanks, David. Rick?
Yeah, I've got a question on the east elevation. I see a double hung towards the front of the house with a transom window above it.
I have no idea where that came from. That, that transom snuck in there somehow. The customer was originally talking about it. That is not going to be on the plan.
Okay, so we, so basically, that window is not, you're just looking at the, you're looking at the 5060?
Yes, in the, right, right behind the front porch.
Yeah, no, 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 I see it. The 5060, so it won't have a transom window and the soldier course will be dropped, right?
Correct, exactly.
So if, if this was going to be approved prior to submission for permit, that would have to be corrected.
Of course.
And then, second comment, I think it echoes what everyone else has said so far. You know, you have the roll lock and everything above the windows, but if it's the same brick material, you're not creating that detail. That would be nice to see. So I'd like to see that, but again, I I don't think I, I think I'll have to accept it as it is.
Thanks, Rick. Jill Ingber.
Yeah, unfortunately, I echo the sentiments of a lot of my colleagues here. I, I also don't, and I don't know if I understood this correctly, but I don't think on, that the fenestration is enough. I mean, I'm looking at the east side. So we're saying that, that underneath towards the front of the house, behind the porch, that there's nothing going in there. Is that correct?
No, that window is going to remain. It's just that small little transom square that's above it that doesn't match anything else. That's what's coming out.
I think she's looking for possibly something in the space between the 5040 and the 5060. Is that correct, Jill?
I think so. It just looks like, I don't know, the window placement looks scarce to me on that elevation. My other concern, too, on the, on the north elevation, the back of the house, I don't know why, there should be a larger door, I think. That door seems awfully small, which I recognize is really more personal preference, but I think it would give more light to the inside of the house. I, go ahead. Oh, sorry, I just, I mean, you know, whether or not it meets our criteria, I have to say, nothing about this house excites me, and I'm frankly tired of seeing these all over the neighborhood.
I'd like to pose a question to Patrick. I mean, I, it's gonna sound a lot like everybody else's, but I almost want to kind of push, put it back in your plate a little bit. Like, it is a classic brick. It's colonial. We have the mutton bars, and the soldier courses at regular, consistent intervals as we might expect, and, you know, it, it does lack some visual interest, and, and, you know, there might be some scale issues to surmise, and even a lack of architectural complexity. But so my question for you, and is truly a question for you, is is there, is there personal aesthetic judgment in here? Is it, is it purely economic, or like, you you have a particular style for a certain type of home, and I just want to hear more about that from you.
Well, this particular customer wanted to have, I know a certain amount of square footage. They have a large family. I can't, unfortunately, because of the fact that this is a first go, it's always a first go, right? I can't have them spend the money on what they're actually doing and put it on paper. To, to, one of you mentioned that there is a space between that front window and the middle window in the house that's indicated as a, as a stair landing. That particular side of the house is getting all arborvities. The doors in the back, they wanted to frame the fireplace, so when they open the doors out to the back patio, and they're putting a, I don't know what you want to call it, it's twinkle lights or whatever they call them, on these bars out there. That's to add more character to the back, but I can't put all that stuff on, you know, on every part of the plan. I understand the, the, the comments regarding, you know, it's squareish appearance, and, you know, I don't disagree to some extent, but I build what they want.
I'm sorry, may I make a comment, please, or am I done with my pen? I can't rebut?
No, go, Jill, Jill, go right ahead, and then we'll come back to Blake.
Thank you. Patrick, here's the thing. People are gonna decorate the outsides of their houses. They're gonna put landscaping around and stuff like that. I understand that. You don't put that on the plan because that has nothing to do with what you're building. The thing is, you build houses for the maximum square footage that you can get, and you, and the maximum square footage you can get is a rectangular box. So that has become your forte, and I understand that people want square footage, and you get, you give them what they want on the inside without any thought to what it looks like on the sides or on the back. You do some decoration on the front. My point is, is that your creativity level is nil. And you keep plunking these same ones in, and you say that this is what my client wants. The client wants square footage, and you're The client wants square footage, and you're giving it to them in the cheapest way you possibly can because that's a square box or a rectangular box. And what we're saying collectively is that we are, we have become very, very disappointed in the lack of creativity and the way you are treating the neighborhood in which we are living. That's, I think, my point. So again, I apologize. I'm not trying to be rude, but it's time someone said it. Thank you, Michael, for giving me more time.
Thanks, Jill. We'll go back to Blake, see if he has anything else to add.
I have no other comment. I just wanted to, I, I feel like we've all sort of expressed the same sentiment. And I just wanted to hear from Patrick directly.
Okay, Mr. Chair, for just some clarification. On the east side elevation, Mr. Ray indicated that there was gonna be arborvities there, but that's the driveway.
Right.
So there wouldn't be room for any arborvities there. So that, that elevation is gonna stand as you see it. So I just didn't wanna confuse or have the planning submission.
Small space. Hank, if you look, there's a small space between the driveway and the house. And that is for mulch and landscaping and the arborvities. And I know she's doing additional things to the side of the house, like a trellis and things like this. So that's where that would be.
Okay, keep going around the room to Sheldon, please.
Okay. All right. There's been enough piling on already. I think the point has been made. And having said that, I will proceed to go ahead and pile on some more. I think there's a couple houses that you built on Hart, just east of Meadowcrest, that have at least some more interesting front facades. I, you know, I think they've got some covering over the porches and that sort of stuff. I think those are yours. And, and at least there's some opportunity there to, to give a little character. Also, again, Hank, do you know the heights of the adjacent homes?
We don't have that, but I will tell you that one of them is a bungalow, and a bungalow height is typically 21 feet. Colonials are typically anywhere from 22 to, you know, 30. The one next door probably is closer to 26. It's probably closer to this height. That's, that's where they're at with that. I will point out that, you know, with this house, Mr. Ray was at 29.88% for the lock coverage. So putting porch covers or roofs over the front porch or the rear porch, which may put some architectural interest into it, would put him over the 30% lock coverage.
All right, I'm not terribly concerned about the rear. I'm just talking about the front facing.
Yeah, no, I was just trying to, to give some background as to, you know, like Jill had a very valid concern in that. So I just wanna make sure that it gets addressed.
I note on the west elevation, the 50 by 60, for some reason, the soldier course at the top doesn't seem to extend to the edges. Is there a reason for that? Lower floor, west elevation, the window, the middle window. That seems to be the only window there that doesn't have the soldier course at top, going all the way to the edge of the window. Said a typo or whatever qualifies typo in terms of submission of drawings.
Well, if you look at the east elevation, I know you're talking about the west, but if you look at the east elevation, the only place where we have the soldiers above the windows is truly above the windows themselves. Are you referring to taking that?
No, he's referring, Patrick, let me help you out here. He's returning, he's talking about the west side elevation, the middle window that's a 5060. You're two bricks short on each side on the soldier course. Are we to assume that you're, that?
Yeah, you mean on the first floor there?
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I don't, yeah, that would be a typo. It would go all the way across.
That's what I thought. Okay. Just wanted you to make sure that somebody was paying attention. The only, the only other comment I have is that there's no windows on the garage. Each of the, at least I didn't see any. There, there seems to be no fenestration whatsoever. The rest of the house has windows galore. They have the window contract on this. But the garage has got a course of brick at the bottom or several courses, and that's fine. I appreciate that. But neither, neither side nor the rear of the garage has any fenestration whatsoever. Hey, you know, I'm not sure which, the left side would be the west side, correct?
Correct. Hank, if you wanna make, I would add a window to that.
Okay, so you're looking at something like a 3030?
3030.
Yeah.
Something of that nature.
It would look good as well and provide more light into the garage.
Yeah, well, plus it breaks it up on the inside on the lot. So that's, I think, where they're going with that.
Yeah.
I would definitely do that.
Hello. I, I just think there should be something breaking up the long expanse on each side. I, I don't know what, what's behind the garage, whether there's shrubby or, or, yeah, I mean, tall shrubbery with the, with the backside neighbor or what's going on. But I'm just thinking that the garage needs something to break it up. So it's just not this flat wall. That's, those are the only comments I have.
Thanks, Sheldon. I apologize. Jeff, did you speak on this one yet? If not, please go ahead. Oh, Jeff, you're on mute.
I spoke up before.
Okay, thank you.
It's a, it's a box. I wish it had a little bit more in the way of distinction.
Thank you. I couldn't agree more with, with everybody else, particularly Jill Plamper. Yeah, I've, I've sat on the planning commission here for, I think, close to four years. And I don't know that a conversation about a Hill and Home has gone anything other than this. There's very clearly a blueprint here that is driven heavily by economics. I mean, there's evidence of it all over the place. There's scale issues. There's, there's no thought. There's no design. It ticks the boxes in the loosest of terms, and I think that's being generous. I got so frustrated that I went to your website, and I'm looking at your home galleries. I actually brought it up. And for the life of me, I can't understand why you have other homes that have interests that have been thought out designs, and you continue to build the track houses of the future in Huntington Woods. It just doesn't make any sense to me. So I, I don't know that I can say anything else that hasn't already been said. It, it maybe ticks the boxes, but I, but I can't stand it. So that's it. Anyone to throw, anybody want to throw a motion? So Hank, there are no motions on the floor. What happens at this point?
Well, it dies for lack of a motion. Or you need to make a motion that would pass or fail, but you should make a motion and vote it one way or the other.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the plan as presented, with the exception of, pardon me, with requiring the addition of a, of a window of appropriate side. I'll let Hank make the decision or assist in that on the east and west side, that the transom window be removed on the first floor of the east side of the house and subject to the drawings for, due to grading and drainage being approved by the city engineer. Those are the three conditions that I'm putting on the, on my motion for approval.
We have a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, we'll go around the room. Blake?
I begrudgingly approve.
Rick?
I, in favor.
Jill Inger?
I do not approve.
David?
Approve.
Jeff?
Reluctant, yes.
Sheldon?
My motion, I guess I have to vote for it.
Jill Plamper?
I vote nay.
I also vote nay.
So we have one, two, three.
Six, three.
Four, five. Yeah, okay. Okay, so it does pass with those additions. So Patrick, you'll have to make a correction.
Opportunity to build a spec house, which does not have a customer behind me breathing down my neck. I would absolutely love to do what each and every one of you want me to do, trust me.
Well, Patrick, I, Patrick, I would ask that you look for that customer that wants to build a house that would be beautiful in Huntington Woods, and search a little harder for something within your, your company and yourself to bring something of beauty to Huntington Woods and not a box. We are a community of people of unusual homes, and we love it here. Please do not continue to bring this to us.
Right. My, my suggestion, Patrick, is part of what you're hired for is to give advice, and it might be beneficial to suggest to your next customer that there was substantial resistance to that sort of a design last time it came.
It's, it's really interesting to me that this is the standard Huntington Woods customer. But as I scroll through all of your homes in Royal Oak, they all seem to want a well-designed home. Berkeley, Royal Oak, Rochester Hills. Let me keep going, but, okay.
All right. Thank you.
We're gonna.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I could just, at this point in time, if we have the discussion for the solar, I'm gonna turn this over to Aaron Reddish, who's going to be presenting. Amy's already made him a co-host, and I believe he has a PowerPoint. So it's going to, Aaron's gonna actually start off and, and give you his interpretation of what they would like to do on behalf of the Environmental Advisory Committee.
Hank, can you all hear me now?
Yes.
All right. I actually, so thank you all for having us here in the EAC. I'm not gonna wow you with any type of PowerPoint. So hopefully you were not here to be wowed by some great master show. Basically, we're continuing the discussion that we had two months ago, where we presented some revisions to the solar ordinance. And we listened to your ideas and suggestions. And the EAC talked about it with kind of what you all talked about. We then did more research, compared it to other communities in Michigan and the area, and adopted almost all the things you, that you brought up in the last meeting in the revised ordinance that you have before you. So the, the, very quickly, I'm gonna show you, I think, four pictures here. So, hold on. I can never figure out how to actually get my PowerPoint here to work. So let's see here. All right, here we go. All right. So maybe you can see this. This is the first image. This is an image in Brighton, Michigan, that was advertised as a great solar panel, a great solar project. Under the proposed revisions, this would not be acceptable, right? Because the height at the top of the panels is above the roof line. This is not what we're talking about. Likewise, this is a standard solar panel, which is also not what we would recommend because, you see, that is not the same color as the rooftop. This is closer to where we're going here. So it's the same, it matches the same. There's not a glare. It blends into the rooftop. Likewise, something like this, this is not the solar panel. This is actually, I think, the next generation, which is a solar roof, which would then bring us to kind of the, the grand finale of the Tesla solar roof that will, which, which is on the horizon, which is coming, which is right now prohibited. But the current ordinance or the proposed ordinance would actually allow it. So that's it. That's my, that's my grand show. So I'm gonna stop sharing there. And what I'd really like to do is hear your comments from the members who have read through the, read through the revisions. And our hope is to bring this forward with your, with your support to the city commission, so we can make Huntington Woods kind of what it is, which is progressive, willing to adopt new technologies also, and environmental, while also kind of keeping the character of the community.
Okay. Anybody else wish to speak on this? Or Hank, anything else to add? Oh, Hank, you're on mute.
Are you like that? I muted myself. Okay, so you might wanna just see if there's anybody else here on behalf of the Environmental Advisory Committee that would like to speak to it. And then maybe Amy has something that she would like to add to it, because she did include a memo. And there were a couple thoughts that I had, but I don't know if anybody else is in here from the Environmental Advisory Committee that would like to speak to it.
Yeah, let's let anybody from the committee go ahead and speak, and if not, we'll move to Amy.
Hi, everybody. I will be uncharacteristically succinct and just say, you know, yeah, excited to be continuing this conversation with both a sense of urgency and the kind of patience and due diligence that it deserves. But just to echo, Aaron, I, I do think that this reflects the, is my, now the dog, now the dog is barking. That just, you know, it, it seems to, it seems to fit us well. You know, this is not like the fringe of being like way out in front of something, nor are we dragging, you know, trying to resist something that does, you know, seem to have real momentum and real possibility. And it's still sort of up to individuals to decide if it's the right investment, substantial investment at that. So, yeah, you've got some language that we, you know, cribbed mostly from other places that have more experience with this than we do. And I'm gonna mute myself before the dog completely, completely takes over. But Rushmore says hi. He says solar. If you can't, I'll translate. He's barking. So, oh, okay.
For the record, Michael, that was Ben Phelan.
Yep. Thanks. Thanks, Ben. Thanks, Rushmore. All right, Amy, or anybody, I'm sorry, anybody else from the, from the committee wish to speak? Okay, Amy, David?
For the opportunity to continue the conversation. I appreciate your guys' support on this.
Absolutely. Okay, Amy, anything to piggyback?
Yep. So at the, at the last meeting, there were a number of items that the planning commission wanted some more clarity on because the prior ordinance had said if it was feasible, if it wasn't feasible to put panels on a certain side of the house, then, then the planning commission would not allow it. So we tried to put some clarity into the standards so that you would be able to make a decision, a clear decision. And the standards came out of other cities. You can see in my memo, we looked at quite a few of the other ordinances and pulled together the definitions and standards to make it clear which solar panels would be permitted and which ones would not be permitted. So I think if you wanted to take a look at the, the standards and go through those and let the EAC know if they were on target with what they had developed or if you needed more clarity, or there were standards that were not, have not been discussed yet.
Okay. So Hank, what are we looking for on? So Hank, what are we looking for on this? This is just a matter to receive?
Well, no, I think at this point in time, you know, you kind of received the information last time, gave them some guidance, and this is what they've come back with. The options, unless Amy had a different idea, would be to accept some of the language, correct some of the language, maybe add or subtract a couple things, and then give Amy some guidance as to whether or not it wants to go to the city attorney for the drafting of an actual ordinance. Right now, you have concepts that will be molded into an ordinance. Assuming that this meets with what you're, what you're looking for. Before it gets into that format, some of the criteria need to be reviewed or should be reviewed by the planning commission. And their thoughts, I know Amy's done a nice job of delineating these different criteria. So you might actually want to take the standards one by one and just go through them. And if people like them, great. If not, or if there's a discussion that needs to be had, maybe just do it that way to make sure that you're, Amy's getting exactly the flavor of what you're thinking. That's where I would go with it.
So just, just so I'm clear, we are kind of doing a roundtable discussion, and there's no motions or anything for tonight. This is just an input session.
Amy's gonna give you, you're gonna give her some guidance. She's gonna come back with something that will need a motion, but right now, this is still a discussion in that format. It'll be generic. Then Amy will take this guidance and go to the city attorney for an ordinance. Okay, if any questions or concerns, now would be a good time.
But I actually just, I guess it's more of a point of order. Just, just so we're clear, the EAC is coming to you as another city body to get advice that we would like to come to the commission with your support. We advise city commission. We don't advise you all. So, as I understand it.
Okay, there's.
Essentially looking for kind of support and, and discussion on this, yeah.
There's gonna have to be, there's gonna have to be a public hearing held on this.
Yeah, of course, of course. We would, we want, what I'm trying to say here is that we would like we would love to have this kind of work together.
Yeah, the planning commission typically is the one that does the
Public hearing.
Public hearings on ordinance. On a lot of the ordinance.
But I think what I'm, what I'm hearing from, from Aaron is, is if the EAC can, can come to the city commission with saying they have the planning commission's input and support on this, it probably carries a touch more weight. Is that?
If that's the way you wanted to go with it, that would absolutely require a motion. Amy, was that your understanding of how this was gonna go?
I don't think we're ready for that, Hank.
Right, I, that's up to you. Let Amy, let's do.
I think what Aaron is saying is that we just all want to be on the same page, so that when the planning commission makes a recommendation on the ordinance to the city commission, it, it reflects the recommendations that the Environmental Advisory Committee brought to them, that the planning commission's comfortable with them, and the recommendation will go to the city commission. So there's no, there's not gonna be any motions.
Okay, so, so, so let's do this. Let's. You know, everybody's had the packet. I, I went through it. I'll be honest, I read it. I did not dig into each, each thing to be prepared to, to make recommendations I want to change. I guess at this point, let's just kind of go around the room and see if anybody has anything outstanding they might suggest. Is that, is that fair for everybody? Okay, we'll start with Blake.
Yeah, I, I feel like you do. It's fairly high level, and I'm not sure that I have any definitive opposition or support for any of it yet. I mean, in concept, I, I do support it, but for the purpose of discussion, I, I don't have any additional questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. Rick?
Yeah, I, I think when this came up before, and, you know, if I recall, we wanted some basis to say yes or no, some more detailed language on this. So I think we're getting towards that. I'd personally like to see the other cities' ordinances. And, and see what their percentages, what their percentages are. How they measure the reflectiveness, that sort of thing. If there is a set industry standard for that, are we gonna reference the set industry standard? Those sorts of details that I think we'd ultimately have to include.
Okay, thanks, Rick. Sheldon?
Okay. I've got a couple of questions. They're, they're talking about solar storage batteries. Is that, is that an exterior piece of equipment, or is it an interior piece of equipment?
Are you asking me?
I'm asking whoever has the information.
I think they're typically in a basement. Somebody on the EAC, correct me if I'm wrong.
Most, many do not have batteries. Those that do are either in the bat, in the basement, or in a garage. So the Tesla power bank is supposed to be in the garage. Or in the basement.
I, I was, in my head, I was thinking about something like an air conditioning unit.
That's what I was thinking, Sheldon. We don't have that.
Concerned about placement on that stuff. Hank, is there existing code on this stuff?
Not as detailed as this. There is an existing code, which is telling you where it can be. We went through that at the last meeting, but this is basically, they're permitted, they're just not permitted on the ground, and they're not permitted on the front of houses. So what they're trying to do is to try, and correct me if I'm wrong, Aaron, but what they're trying to do is to come forward with a more definitive ordinance that's maybe gives you some more specific guidance as to what you want your finished product to look like.
Well, my concern is whether or not there is existing building code.
There, there is, and that's one of the couple of things that I referenced, and there was a couple of things that are not building code. Because Huntington Woods is very, 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 very new to the solar energy issue. There was a couple of things that the building official, as well as the electrical inspector, which would be both require permits. You would need a permit for both in order to put this on. And inspections would be required at different intervals. So, and that's not listed in the code, because there's not a solar code, like there is a, you know, plumbing code or anything like that. So it's basically you know, kind of left to the building officials for what they would like to see. And the building official's main concern was, is he wanted to see the rails mounted before, as to the electrical inspector, before the panels were installed. Because once panels are installed, you can't see them unless you climb and start looking with flashlights. And that's not a big thing to ask. I mean, they're, they're gonna install it anyway. They put the rails in, and then the panels pop onto the rails. And then they're connected to the system. They want to see it before it before it, before that. That, that was really one of the only things that they had. The electrical inspector, let's see here. As far as the battery storages, there was no problem with storing them in the basement. He was just questioning whether or not they needed to be vented. Because it's a battery storage. And then there was a clarification for applications and permits, making sure that they do get permits for it. And that type of thing. Yeah, go ahead.
Do you see, as part of each installation, there, like we have with, you know, with drainage, you, you see the city engineer having a place, or just the ordinary permitting process?
I, I don't, I don't see the city engineer having a place in this. I do see the building official having a place in this.
Okay, it is, would there be any benefit to having the city engineer's input in terms of drafting the ordinance?
I think the building official pretty well covers it, and he and I did have a, a discussion about this, as well as with the electrical inspector. And basically, the warranties that are on these are provided by the manufacturer and the installation crews. It's nothing that the city would weigh in on, so they're gonna install it. They, one thing they did want to do is with every installation, they want to make sure the manuals and the specifications were included. So they can actually verify that these are installed to manufacturer specifications. So their concern was on the documentation and as to when they, when it would first start out, and it would be applied for, for permit, that they would have something to reference. Which all manufacturers provide that, so.
Is, would there be? Do you perceive any likely issues, for instance, on you know, on the stability or strength of the, of the roof? Or pitch, are, you know, pitch issues or anything like that in terms of the weight of the installation?
Again, that's what the building inspector would be looking at, because different pitches have different stress loads and different loads. It's like the lower the pitch, the more snow load it takes. The higher the pitch, the more snow load is off of it. But the higher the wind load. So it, it would depend, but that's one of the reasons that when we talked to the building official, that he wanted to have the information so that he could make sure that it was done according to HOIL.
Okay, in, in terms of the comments that you'd made in, in, you know, your, your supplement to or whatever it was. Consideration, the item three consideration be giving to these kinds of things. Do you, do you envision?
I, I don't have any documentation to that. The reason that I included that was because when we went through these, we really didn't have a lot of time to go over them. So considerations, the way it was said, it was consideration can be given to. You don't have to, but those are some things that come up.
I, I get, the question is whether or not you, you envision the same kind of standards relating to giving variances, for instance, for a front-mounted, a front facade.
Well, if that, if that becomes to the thing, I, I think, and you know, I mean, there's, there's everything on the spectrum from this, from no regulation to stringent regulation. And while I think everybody's head is, is that solar's an up and coming thing, it's been here, it works well in a lot of places. I think the main concern is how to make it work well for the city of Huntington Woods. I think that some of those are, are consistent. You can either accept that the 10% is fine, or you can say, well, look, 10% may just be a tree that blocks the sun in this. And maybe we need a different number. Or you can say that the planning commission doesn't want to weigh in on it, or they want to weigh in on it only if it needs to go to the front, and then they just have to get approved by, you know, by the planning commission, if it's going to have a front installation. These are all things that you can do. You're, you're not married to anything, and I think the Environmental Advisory Committee has done a really nice job of getting their thoughts out, because while their expertise may be in trying to help and provide for environmentally safe and sound sources of energy, it also has to translate into an ordinance. And because there's not a ton of ordinance language currently with this, that you may have to cover more in the ordinance than you would normally. So that's why all that, that's the only reasons that my comments on there were just specifically designed for that.
I'm trying to figure out why, once the thing is installed, why you would need you, you, there's reference to possible needing manual permit or monitor issues. I don't understand that.
Okay, so here's the thing with that. And let me get to that. The contractors pull the permits. The way that there was, the way that it's said is that application permits, the owner of any solar system may obtain, shall obtain a building permit. Contractors typically pull the permits. So the only reason that we would have an owner pull a permit and not a contractor, because you, you need a contractor, you need an electrician in order to do it. You're gonna need a building permit for that.
That's not the, that's not the end I was talking about. You made some reference to annual monitoring.
Right, and that's, that's kind of where I'm going with this. So the only reason that an owner would need to pull a permit as an owner would be as if we were gonna regulate it with a permit, just like we do with you know, alarms or something of that nature. And I don't know that that was, so the, the challenge there was not that it would be to the the idea that the owner needs to pull the permit. It would be that the contractor or permits need to be pulled and take the owner out of the equation. That's the only thing that was, I think, with that, because if you pull a permit as a licensed electrician, you pull a permit as a licensed builder or a licensed contractor, then you're fine. If a homeowner pulls that, typically, they're the ones that do the work on that. They're not going to.
Okay, so my question again is it relates to the annual monitoring that you seem to reference.
The only reason I answer, that I said that, Sheldon, was because if you're going to have an owner pull a permit, there is no reason to have an owner pull a permit unless you're going to monitor it. So it's already monitored if you have the home, if you have a building permit and an electrical permit. So to me, it seemed like a step that they don't need to have. It seemed like an additional step that wasn't necessary.
Okay.
And that's why I said that.
Okay. All right, I'm done.
Yeah, I would like to I'd like to see us look a little bit at the city of Ann Arbor ordinance. The Ann Arbor ordinance was much, much simpler than what we had. It also offered in normal circumstances for residential and expedited permit. And the only permit that it really required was an electric permit. There was no charge for line item solar fees and plan reviews. There was the inspector's charge. They had nothing as related to a restriction on whether it was front or whether there was a 10% energy loss. So, so they simplified it. We will, over time, be moving much more to solar energy. And they did have weight restrictions and things like that. They had a very, very detailed permit. And it might be helpful if we saw what some of the other cities are doing. When I went to look for ordinances, the one I found was Ann Arbor, and they, they've been doing this stuff since 2011, and their most recent ordinance dates from 2017. You know, if we want to do aesthetics, which is what was presented to us, then maybe it comes to planning, but in normal circumstances, it should be something where it goes directly to Hank. There are some general guidelines that he follows. If, if the thing is way off as it relates to looks or any kind of something new in installation, bring it back to planning, but in general, it becomes an addition. Now, the one thing I did like in the Ann Arbor ordinance was they had ancillary solar equipment, including solar storage batteries, and they had some definitions as to where you place them, how you place them. And when no longer in use, shall be disposed of in accordance with applicable laws. We need to, at least with these solar installations, perhaps not remove the panels on the house, but get rid of anything that may be a, a storage unit, rather than just someone walk away with it.
Amy, hey. Amy and Hank, correct, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I, I feel like we're starting to go down a little bit too deep of a rabbit hole on some of this. I, you know, I think the EAC's done a really good job of, of kind of providing some high-level points that we should be commenting on. I, I think everything that Sheldon and Jeff raised are valid, but man, it feels like we're trying to go from A to B, and, and these guys are at Z already. Are we, are we too early for these conversations, do you think? Or is this all good dialogue at this point of the conversation?
Well, this is helpful.
Okay, all right. I, I just wanted to make sure we didn't get ahead of ourselves here. Okay, no, no, no. I, I just wanted to kind of get a quick check here.
It, it seemed on the first page of Hank's memo that he really questioned 10% south exposure, front facade. You know, he really was saying, why don't you look at this and see if we need it?
Okay, no, 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 that's fair. I, again, I, I think they're all valid points. I just wasn't sure if this was the right stage to do that. And if if Amy and Hank think this is helpful, then by all means, then, then let's, let's keep going.
Any, any discussion that ultimately moves towards acceptance of the solar units are gonna be helpful. Like Jeff, I believe that this is where we're ultimately gonna end up, or at least a percentage of it. Having said that, there's not many or any in Huntington Woods right now. So this is kind of our gateway to, to getting it in there, and then when people know the rules, then it makes it so that they can actually get you know, they can have people. You know, they can have people out, get prices, get this, may have some criteria as to how they have to bid it in order to meet our ordinances. So that was the intent with the building department suggestion and the electrical inspector suggestion. I don't see how we get around those, um, not that we're looking to get around anything. But I think that the discussion on it's helpful, and as far as the southern exposure. What you have to decide is, is that, you know, on a southern exposure, which is the best exposure for solar. That's going to mean that half the houses in the Bronx subdivision, um, which will run from Wyoming to Scotia. And run from Ludlow all the way to 11 Mile, um, would be facing south, so. Every side of that street could have a front facing solar, so the question is, is A, do you want to permit it by right? Um, B, do you want to look at it if it's a front facing solar? Um, and C, you know, it, it's just like the other thing too, where you take a look at it and you say, um, are you good with the 10%? I mean, and, and that's it, and again, that's just going by what was suggested by the EAC.
Okay, great, thanks. Yep, yep, absolutely, I was just going to try to figure out where I left off here, so Je- Jeff, uh, are you, are you all set, or you got anything else to add?
No, I could say more, but that's enough, there are other.
Okay, all right, so who, let's see, Jill Inger.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I feel like, um. I give total deference to the EAC on this, I, I'm in support of it and I, looks like to me that they've certainly done their homework. Um, if you're asking us on the plan, on, as part members of the planning commission to. Way in on, you know, the ordinance, the proposed language itself, I don't feel like I know enough. Um, of the comparable ordinances in other cities as we've talked about, to even know what's reasonable. So I guess I'd like to take a little time to do that, um. But that being said, I feel, you know, I'm in support of this and I, I have strong deference for the EAC on this.
Great, thanks, thanks, Jill.
I was just going to suggest, I mean, I don't know if you want to. If it, it's worthwhile to set up another, you know, another time to meet. Once we've had a chance to, to really dive into the language and, and try to move this forward, so that we're in a position to, to get it approved.
Okay, thank you. Sure.
So I, the only, my only caution, I think Hank touched on this a little bit, is that. Uh, and I'm going to circle back a little bit to the Hillen conversation we were having earlier. There are a, a lot of moving parts to solar and I am a proponent, absolutely. Um, I just think when it comes time to, to hit the desk of planning, we have to consider. The aesthetics, because we are absolutely going to be in positions where at some point we're going to say, well, look, it meets the city's requirements, but. Um, and then we're sort of stuck, having to, to approve something that. Does technically meet the requirements that we're not all entirely in favor of, so. I'm still thinking about Hillen, sorry.
Uh, okay, thanks Blake, a- anything else to add while you're, uh, while you've got the mic?
Oh, that's it for me.
Okay, uh, move over to David.
All right, yeah, I mean, I, I agree, this is where things are going and we need to get ahead of it to the extent we can. I feel like this is going to involve multiple iterations along the way. As technology changes, um, and things develop, you know, one of my thoughts is 10% isn't enough. It should be a higher percentage differential, and then also I think there's talk in here of an anti-reflective coating. But what is the percentage, what does that mean, you know, um, I think the presentation we had. Back in February, it must have been, um, you know, they did a good job of showing us all the different, um. Products and materials that are available then, but acknowledging that there's a lot of others and. Unfortunately, I feel like having not seen the other ordinances. Um, I would imagine whatever we put together would be somewhat lengthier than the others as we try to navigate through it. Um, which might make it cumbersome at first, but, you know, as it develops, again, I think this is going to take multiple iterations. Uh, of development, um, and generally I'm disfavored the street facing, so I think. That 10% number needs to come up, um, again, so we have. Rules to follow, but maybe some flexibility to avoid the Hillen home situation.
All right, appreciate it, thank you, David, uh, Rick.
I already spoke.
Oh, you did, I'm sorry, I apologize, I think I hit everybody here, um. I'm sorry, Jill, it's because you don't have your video on.
Yeah, well, I'm like said, I'm in the basement, so, um. Uh, so, my, I don't, I like the rest of you, don't feel that I. Know enough about it to be able to. Comment on the ordinance as of yet, I agree that I would like to see ordinances that are coming out from other cities, so we have some. Basis of comparison, um, I think that, yes, I, I agree that we need to pursue. Um, other sources of, of clean energy that can be used in Huntington Woods. Um, I'm a huge fan of the solar flower at the zoo, I think it's amazing and beautiful and. Almost, you know, a piece of art wrapped in with an environmentally sound, um, energy source. Um, again, but that's a freestanding thing, you know, it's not on the house, um. But I would also want to make sure that as we move forward into the. The use of different energy sources, I think that there are going to be a lot of nuances in it for things like. Are you producing solar power for, to, to be fed back into the grid? Are you, you know, and then you purchase it back through your, your energy company, are you producing solar power simply to be used in your home? To power a certain amount of things, are you producing solar power to try and. And charge up a bank of batteries in order to, you know, fuel your house. In, in times that there is not sunlight going on, th- these are very, very different things. And they have different levels of consequences and different levels of checks, checks and balances and safety concerns that go with them. You know, how, how well do any of us understand the battery technology that's being used to store this energy? How well do we understand, um, what has to be done to make sure that those batteries that are being used are being used in a safe manner? There, there's a, there's a whole lot involved in this, um, other than does it look pretty on the front of a roof? Um, so my question is, is from a planning commission standpoint, how much of this? Are we, do we need to understand and how much of this? How deeply into this is the environmental advisory committee going? And how well are we not just engaging in this type of energy, but how well are we doing it? How, how safely are we doing it and are we covering those bases? Though, those are the kind of things that run through my engineering brain, so. I, you know, I, I don't know the answer to any of those questions and maybe Aaron you do or David you do, um. And I do, and, and, and do we need to think about it, I mean, you know, Hank, you talk about things like, well, the building inspector will look at this. Well, how much of an expert is the building inspector? You know, I mean, we, people, you know, the building inspectors have, like, they throw a huge fit if you don't have a GFI. You know, in, in your electrical circuit in your kitchen, but are they, you know, are they worried about battery containment in the basement? You know, are you going to get the same kind of a reaction for, you know, oh, you've got, you know, a whole bunch of batteries in your basement, yeah, no problem. But dang it, you better have a GFI in the kitchen, I mean, I, you know, how, how versed are they? You know, what, how much do they know, how much do they need to know, th- these are all the things that run through my head, so. I've probably gone way too deep, we're much deeper than I should have into this, but. These are the things that are running through my head right now, and as we talk about ordinances, I want to know that the people who are writing them. Are, are informed and educated. Enough, does that make sense? So that's, that's where my head is, so.
Great, thanks Jill, um, I, I would kind of echo, uh, what I think Jill brought a lot of good points, but. To me, I, I don't know that those necessarily fall to us, I, I kind of feel like that is a. Code enforcement, uh, and that's, I'm using that very broadly i- issue. Um, I, I'm a hundred percent in for this, I, I think it's great, uh, I, I think to dumb this whole conversation down. Our job as the planning commission is to figure out how to do this without it making, making it look terrible, right? And, and I think the, the EAC has done some awesome work here. Uh, I, I've just been kind of going through some of the stuff that they've picked up from, uh, you know, meeting with the, us, I think, last time and, and probably. Since then, you know, essentially banning, uh, facade, facade, facade mounted. Uh, devices, ground mounted, uh, discussing what these things should look like if they are front facing or rear facing. I, I think as long as we put in some decent thought into what this looks like and, and don't let people put. Uh, you know, 15 foot satellite dishes in their front yard, we should be in good shape, so I, I really appreciate all the work and. Fully support, uh, what, uh, this, this group is doing. So I guess that said, Hank, where do we go from here on this?
Well, Amy, if you want to, I, I think. What, and again, Amy, correct me if I'm wrong, but what I thought was is that you want to take away from this meeting. And start to try to fashion an actual ordinance. Um, it sounds like the planning commission wants some more information, which we certainly can also provide with that. Uh, Amy, was it your understanding that you want to see this back on the November agenda?
Uh, I think for the November agenda, we can provide you the ordinances that we relied on. Uh, it's a lot for you to go through, which, which, that's why the EAC tried to distill it for you, but we're happy. To provide the ordinances so you can go through them all to see if there's anything that was missing or was appropriate for Huntington Woods. Then maybe give that to you in November and then we can start the discussion up again in January.
I, I guess my only concern is I, I want to make sure that the planning commission is involved at a planning commission level, meaning. Uh, and Hank, please jump in and, and tell me I'm crazy here, but I don't know that. While, while Jill Plamper has, has great points around the safety and what happens in this stuff, somebody brought up what happened, I think Jeff. When somebody moves out, what happens with this giant battery bank, I think those are all great points to consider, but. I don't know that those are our issue to solve, so, so to me, it almost feels like this ordinance should kind of be. Uh, you know, nut and bolted together and then come to us more from, and I hate to say this from like an aesthetic point of view, um.
I, I think you're actually right, I think that for the point about referencing the building official and the electrical inspector. Were specifically designed to make sure that those questions were answered. Um, is the building inspector qualified? The answer, he's qualified to determine whether the load and the weight and everything is okay for the house it's provided on, so you're not putting. 10,000 pounds on a two by four rafter, that would be the building inspector's involvement in, and that's why he would want to check where the rails are before the panels are installed. With the electrical inspector, she brings up an excellent point, how are the connections doing, is this thing going to blow up, are the batteries stored properly? Those are all things that the inspector would do, on this, like any other inspection, there would be a rough and there would be a final. Once it's approved, it's approved by an act 54 certified building inspector and a rated electrical inspector. So I, you know, those are the people that we rely on to do this and those are the people that we rely on to interpret their specific codes. And I think actually, as long as you make a reference to that in the ordinance, you're probably just fine, but I don't think that the planning commission has to understand. Electrical engineering or, or building loads and, you know, wind loads, snow loads and panel loads. So I don't, I don't think that's something to prove, so I think you're more or less looking at aesthetics, placement, that type of thing.
Okay, no, I, 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 I agree, thank you, um, I, I think you bring up a good.
What I was, that was what I was trying to get to, how much of this should we actually be concerned with? Or how much of it should the environmental advisory committee and the city inspectors and the code enforcement people be bringing forward and saying, look? We have done all of this investigation and we have done all this work, now all we need you guys to do. Is look at it from the aesthetic point of view, if that's all we need to do, then that's all I'm asking, tell me you've done all that other work and I'm good to go.
I, I think we're there, our electrical inspector also inspects Oak Park and they do have a fair amount of solar in Oak Park. So he was comfortable as long as he gets an opportunity to look at it, um, because he's the one where the nuts and bolts could be. And then as far as installation and putting it on, the building inspector does want to see it. It's like when you put a generator in Huntington Woods, you need a building permit, you need a mechanical permit and you need an electrical permit. So to have two permits for this is not unusual and it's not something that would be, um, detrimental to anything, it's just simply going to. Um, ensure our homeowners are getting the higher quality jobs and that's, that's what they were looking at. But to not consult them, I think would have been remiss and that's why I did that.
Okay, now, I, I, again, I, I think these are all, all great points and as long as we refer to those, uh, boxes being appropriately checked and. Everything's safe and sound and, um. As it should be, I, I think we should be all set, so. Amy, I feel like you got.
Clarifying question, it's Ben, sorry, I, I just, I just was walking the dog that whole time and listening and appreciating all of it. Uh, and I guess I referenced sort of the balancing of the sense of urgency and, and patience in doing this. And if I can sort of tilt a little more toward the urgency of it. Just because we know how crazy the world is right now and a lot can have change and. Between meetings and over into the next calendar year, and I'm not saying it won't go that far, but I, I. I wonder if there is a, like a packet and some language and some alternative language that we can get to you. In advance of the November meeting, like submitted for your approval. Whether you take it, you know, to the city commission, or we take it to the city commission where we've synthesized it and we've. Balanced out the, you know, and wordsmithed it, hopefully not in real time, but to a point where. I would hope, you know, by consensus, not just both committee and commission, but all or virtually all of us. On both, so that we can bring it to our elected commissioners. With, you know, full-throated approval that we have really, you know, considered, right, everything from. Safety and sustainability and aesthetics and impact on neighbors and pastors' pie, like, can we?
So what if I?
Question, like, is that, do you think we could, we can try that next month, so we don't sort of find ourselves in a sort of more groundhog day? Of a scenario?
What if I propose this, I, I assume that Amy has taken more notes than she ever wanted to on this topic at this point. Um, what, what if, uh, is it reasonable, Amy, I guess, to. Uh, to Ben's point, could, could you get together and kind of collaborate with the EAC on the notes you've taken today? To allow them to formulate a, uh, more involved plan than they've already presented. Next, is, is that a reasonable thought?
Amy, do you, and do you see this ending up in the zoning ordinance?
Um, no, it was in the, uh, sustainability.
Sustainability is in the zoning ordinance, yeah, so if it does, then the planning commission would have to hold the hearing.
Okay, so. Go ahead, Amy, I'm sorry.
Well, what, what I heard the planning commission wanted was, it wanted to see what other cities do. How they handle, um, solar ordinances. Uh, and some, some more basic knowledge about solar panels. So what I was thinking was we could provide those ordinances. And, uh, look for, um, a solar installer that could come in and kind of give a brief overview about solar panels. How they work, kind of provide a foundation so that you are clear when you're looking at the definitions and the standards, what did it, what that actually means. And give me more information.
Could we do that in conjunction with a public hearing? Like, like invite that person to, to present at a public hearing? During a planning commission meeting while we gather this information?
Yes, I don't think you need to do a public hearing, because we don't have an ordinance to, uh, for them to. But we could make it a presentation.
So Hank, would we then have to have a public hearing on top of that, I'm trying to skinny.
If you're going to amend the zoning ordinance, you'll have, there'll have to be a public hearing at some point if you're going to amend the zoning.
Yeah, we're, we're missing the, we're right now talking about what needs to be incorporated into an ordinance. And, and once that is decided on, then it goes to the city attorney and she has to write the ordinance.
Right.
And then that's where the. And then that's where the hearing gets set. So we're trying to figure out what needs to go into the ordinance so it can be written and then have the public hearing.
So Hank, you're saying we we need the the ordinance sort of finalized prior to holding the public hearing, because we're actually presenting that ordinance to.
Yeah, because you have to publish it. You also have to, you know, I mean, people are gonna want to see what it is and it's, that way it's not an abstract concept. It is. What you intend to approve.
And and the city attorney would be the one who would actually write the ordinance, is that correct?
Yes.
Either her or Ben Carlisle, one or the other.
Okay, so I I guess then my next question, I'm sorry, guys, I'm I'm just trying to kind of skinny this down to to, I like to to Ben's point here to not. Drag this thing out till 2022. It it, would it be possible with the information we have now, with the support of the planning commission we've had so far, with the questions that Amy's brought? Would it be possible to roll all that up to the city attorney to produce a draft ordinance at this point, or is that premature?
No, we can do that.
Does does that make sense to everybody? And then we we have an ordinance to take a peek at?
I think if, you know, from our perspective, we kind of looked at the practicality, why should we revisit this? The sustainability, the safety, the technology, like what's out there, and we wanted to. Get in conversation with you guys so that it looks the way it should in the way that. You know, the commission expects it to, to put those aesthetic guardrails and like address all those concerns because. The technologies move forward and a lot of the concerns like previously. Aren't there and then addressing that fairness with like the energy efficiency and where they can be on the house, that was like a big thing. That we were really concerned about. And then I think like Hank jumping in tonight, which I really appreciate. Because I think that was the point that we had missed, like from the technical aspect of like. You know, who needs to like do the permitting and installing and inspecting to like have that oversight? I think that was like a a really good piece that came up out of this conversation, but I think if. You guys on the aesthetic end are feeling comfortable and Hank like. Is feeling comfortable with what needs to happen with inspection, we're definitely comfortable from like what we've looked at. On our end, so.
So could we take that as the next step? Could we propose giving all of this information that's been gathered thus far? To the city attorney and and have her produce a draft? Would everyone here like that?
I have a question for you. You had asked me to set up a planning commission meeting for November 12th.
That's a special meeting for a site plan review.
So there's still gonna be the regular meeting on on November 11?
No, on November 23rd. So that gives, that'll give her approximately four weeks to get it together.
And Hank, do we, am I? Is that fair to say a draft that we could potentially then edit based on the public hearing?
You, well, you could edit the draft, but I mean, once you have the draft, then you would set the public hearing. So I mean, realistically, and there's no December meeting. So realistically, I can't see any way that this doesn't go till at least January.
Right, so so we could at least, if the city attorney could do it, we could present the draft on the 23rd. And fingers crossed it went well, we could push it forward. If it went sideways, we could then edit it and re-present it in January, is that right?
Absolutely, but I mean, you you'll say, once you get the draft ordinance, assuming that, you know, Carol Wazadi can do it. Is that you'll have it, you'll have a document, you can look at it, and then you can discern exactly what you like, what you don't like, what other points may have to be included. And at that point, you set the public hearing and the final draft to be presented and that's what you vote on and that's what you, that's what you take for the final hearing. And then at that point in time, you would make a recommendation and it goes to the city commission.
So our, so our, our next actual planning commission meeting is the 23rd, so I would say we would have to have it back from her by the 16th to review.
We're gonna have to get this to you a little bit earlier, because there's gonna be a lot more materials. So it won't be, you know, assuming, I mean, as soon as I get the materials, I can forward materials to you, that's not a problem. Agendas typically go out on the Friday before the meeting.
But that, that, that seems to be a reasonable ask, though. If 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 Carol can get it done by the 16th, we have that week to review it. You know, we can, the the planning commission then can comment and and give feedback. Hopefully she could turn around a final version by the 23rd that we could then present. And if I'm being way aggressive here, let me know. I I don't know if that timeline is insane.
I I think we have to ask. I can't promise her time.
Yeah, well, let's try that. I mean, I guess worst case, we we have to bump it, which, I mean, unfortunately is. Your, the time of year where we'd have to bump it to January, but I think let's ask Carol to get it to us by the 16th so we can review and and if all goes well. We'll present it to the public hearing the 23rd and I'll move on with solar panels all over our houses.
Amy, are you okay with that?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Anything else before we look for a motion to adjourn?
No, I just want to remind you that we do have a special meeting for a site plan review on the 12th. So I send, I sent out notices, I sent out information. I'll send you out reminders with links again to your email addresses. But we'll see as many of you as possible on the 12th and hope that we can help this other resident out. Other than that, I thank you all for being here this evening.
All right, motion to adjourn? Okay, Rick?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Jill? Inger?
Hi.
Blake?
Hi.
Jeff?
Nay.
Jill Plamper, you thought I was gonna forget about you?
Hi.
Motion passes. See you guys next month. No, on the 12th. Thank you.
12th, yeah.
Have a good evening.